Folks, let me call the meeting to order. We thank you for joining us this evening. We are a little lopsided at the diocese, but we'll proceed on. This is a regularly scheduled and called Greer City Council meeting called and convened this evening, April 12th, 2016. Having been duly assembled, I will ask that Councilman Lee Dumas lead us in a pledge of allegiance and then in an invocation. So if you will join us in standing for both of those, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we invoke your presence here tonight and thank you for this great city that you've given us. Help us to do your will here tonight. Help us to manage your city in the way that's pleasing to you. Bless those that are out serving us right now and be with us during this meeting tonight. In your precious and holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Ms. Duncan, anyone to appear in public forum this evening?
No, sir.
With that, then, council will move to the minutes from our council meeting on March the 22nd, 2016. I'll entertain the motion that'd be received.
It's a move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any items of note for the clerk? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Never voted first.
There's always a first.
Deal challenge.
Well, we have the pleasure of having Ms. Greater Greer Teen back with us this evening. Berkeley Bryant is here to accept a proclamation on behalf of her special cause as she gears up for Ms. Junior of South Carolina, and it is in regards to No Bullying Day. And so, Berkeley, if you'll join me up front, I've got a presentation to make.
How are you doing?
I'm great, how are you?
I am doing well.
Good, thank you.
Let's get this thing going so we'll have an official record of this.
Okay, the proclamation reads thus: Mayor Rick Danner and the Greer City Council recognize No Bullying Day. Whereas various researchers have concluded that bullying is the most common form of violence affecting millions of American children and adolescents annually; and whereas people of all ages and abilities have the right to be safe from physical and emotional attack and any form of behavior that is threatening, harassing, bullying, abusive, or dangerous must be stopped; and whereas families, schools, youth organizations, colleges, workplaces, places of worship, and other groups are responsible for empowering and protecting their members and for promoting cultures of caring, respect, and safety for everyone; whereas children who witness bullying often feel less secure, more fearful, and intimidated, and children who bully are at greater risk of engaging in more serious violent behaviors; and whereas children have great power to participate in building a supportive cultural culture of caring and community and respect, adults are responsible for providing the leadership, supervision, and guidance necessary for maintaining an environment that is physically and emotionally safe for everyone in our community. Whereas Ms. Greater Greer Teen, Berkeley Bryant champions the cause of making South Carolina a no-bully zone and encourages everyone to take the anti-bullying pledge, "I won't stand by, I will stand up." Now therefore, Mayor Rick Danner and the Greer City Council declare that the city of Greer, schools, students, parents, recreation programs, religious institutions, and community organizations be encouraged to engage in bullying awareness and prevention activities designed to make our communities safer for all children and adolescents, and recognize April 12th, 2016 as No Bullying Day in the city of Greer. With that, we want to present this proclamation to you. Join me in giving her a hand of applause.
First of all, I'd like to thank you, Mayor Danner, for this opportunity. It's so humbling and so rewarding to see all this hard work that I've put into this program really paying off, especially here in the city of Greer, that I now have the opportunity to represent as Ms. Greater Greer Teen. And I hope that as a South Carolina teen, hopefully this summer, I can bring this to the national level, to the nation for No Bullying Day for the nation as a whole. So I thank you so much for this opportunity. It's so humbling.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
All right.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Looks like he's still on.
It does. It's not now. All right. It's always amazing to me, the amount of activity that our, both our Greater Teen and Ms. Greater Greer, put into their time representing the community. It is really a passion and a calling for those young ladies that get involved in that because they seem to be extremely busy, both with their platforms and appearances during the course of the year. And we thank them for what they do for our community. The next person that is going to be here with us this evening is a petitioner from Spartanburg County Indicators Project, Kathy Dunleavy, who is a cabinet member and Spartanburg County Community Indicators Project and president and CEO of the Mary Black Foundation. I'm sure you are all familiar with the Mary Black Foundation and the incredible amount of work that they're doing in terms of both wellness and outdoor activities and fitness and in all the many, many things that I can't even begin to touch on that they do in the community for the Spartanburg area. A great organization and one to be applauded. And I think you're going to find their indicators program to be very interesting. It's one that y'all have been doing now for a number of years and have some great research and data. And I assume that Kathy is going to share some of that with us this evening as they embark on a longer-term master plan in the Spartan, Greater Spartanburg community. And I am sure that the indicators project is going to play a huge role in that. So the floor is yours, Ms. Dunleavy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I'm delighted to be here representing a large committee that we call the Community Indicators Project. I want to tell you a quick story. Spartanburg was named, I don't know if you've all heard, but we were named one of the communities for the Way to Wellville. And there's, it was a national competition challenge. Five communities across the country were chosen, and Spartanburg was one of them. And the idea is that we have five years to work on five health outcomes. And so, and this is a process we've been working on since, for a little over a year now. And on Wednesday, I was on a conference call with the other four communities. And we were giving an update of some of the things that were going on in our community. Everybody was taking a turn. We talked about a few different grants that we had just received. And Class Up County, Oregon, it was a younger woman, but she said, "You know, I'm so sick of hearing about Spartanburg. Every time I turn around, Spartanburg's getting something." And we try, and we don't get it, but Spartanburg, Spartanburg, Spartanburg. And of course, it put me on the spot, but I had to stop and tell her, I said, "You know, we didn't hit the, we didn't, the gate didn't open a year ago, and all these great things are happening for us. This started 12 years ago." And that's my point I wanted to share with you, is that the Community Indicators was the beginning, and the stars are really just beginning to align for us in so many different ways. And it's been a culmination of a lot of hard work that actually started in 2004. So, the United, I was the CEO of United Way, and in 2004, the county foundation came to me and said, "Can we partner on the Community Indicators Project?" Absolutely. So we did it. We involved hundreds of people, hundreds of people. And long story short, this was a project to identify, measure things, look at what our key focus areas needed to be in this county, and then to present this data to the community. It was not to be that there was a pot of gold at the end of the rainbow. It was, "Here's the data, and now you need to take action on it." And it's been extremely successful. 12 years into it, we now have USC Upstate, the county government of Spartanburg, Spartanburg County Government, the Mary Black Foundation, the United Way, the County Foundation, the Hospital Foundation, and now the Chamber. So there are key people at the table, and every three years, we would update. Now we have seven focus areas, and we update two of those focus areas every year. So there's continuous new data being shown. And I want to tell you, in that 12-year period, some of the successes that we've had to show you why we are so, in such a good spot today. I'll tell you about one of them was teen pregnancy. When we got the Community Indicators information in 2004, 2005, teen pregnancy rates were abysmal. And the four funders sat around and looked at each other and said, "This is not acceptable. We cannot, we cannot have this in our county." And so, we each put in $40,000, and we hired someone to be on the ground from the South Carolina Campaign to Prevent Teen Pregnancy and help us to stay focused on this issue. It culminated in a federal grant that we got for the last five years, and I'm happy to tell you the Mary Black Foundation went after another grant this year, and we received another $5.3 million to work on it for the next five years. We reduced teen pregnancy by 53 percent. 53 percent. And it still needs to come down, but 53 percent. And it's because we got the data, we realized what needed to be focused on, and we went after it. Education. If we hadn't looked at that data, Dr. John Stockwell would not have said, "We need to form a task force and figure out why only 25, no, 19 percent of our adults over the age of 25 are, have a baccalaureate degree." And, long story short, we got to where John is heading up the Spartanburg academic movement. We're getting, we're making great, great strides. We've gone from 19 percent to 23 percent, and it keeps on going up. So behavioral health is another one. All of these issues are coming to the forefront and being acted on because of the Community Indicators. And we have made a pledge that we're going to keep these, this report and this project alive and breathing because it is making a difference. We were very fortunate, Spartanburg County was very fortunate, that because of this, because of the Way to Wellville, because of the teen pregnancy improvement, because of our focus on education, we received the Culture of Health Prize from the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation. They had 340 communities apply to receive the Culture of Health Prize. We received it. It was an 18-month vetting process, and they came here, they interviewed people, and they could see. And it wasn't because we're doing everything right. That's not it. It's because we're working together. And I always tell people, that's the secret sauce. That is what we have that so many communities do not, counties do not have, and that is that we all work together. And I go places, I speak about Community Indicators in Boston, DC, and every time somebody stands up and raises their hand and says, "But how do y'all get along together?" And I say, "How do you not get along if you want to move your community forward?" That's why you see all of these partners at the table, working together, putting their own agenda down for the good of the common, the good of this county. So I wanted to share that with you. I know you told me to move it with the arrow. And there's really, I've told you the most important pieces of it, and it truly is. It's about community conversation. I know that some of organizations in Greer are participating on the committees, and you can see there, some of the other fruits of our labor, if you will. And it's extremely impressive, and truly, the stars have aligned for this county, and I think you're going to see nothing but more great things ahead very soon. So thank you for your time. And if you have any questions about Community Indicators, please don't hesitate to let us know.
Kathy, I've been, you know, I've obviously been following it for a number of years and read the annual reports and stuff. Can you tell us a little bit more about how the data is actually collected?
Yeah.
Who assists with that? Who's in charge of that?
Right. You know, when we, back in '04, we hired Clemson to help us pull some of the data together. And when that project, that particular iteration was over, John Dargan and I got in the car and we went over to see John Stockwell at USC Upstate, and we said, "You know, it just makes perfect sense for our university that's right here to house all this data." And he couldn't have agreed more, and basically went out and hired Dr. Kathleen Brady, who is still with us today. She is at the table on this community, and she's the one, she heads up the Metropolitan Studies Institute, and she collects and amasses and analyzes all of this data, and it is housed at USC Upstate. So, when we got the Culture of Health Prize, we got on a conference call with the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation in Princeton, and we said, "Why did we get it?" And the first thing they said to us was, "Because you are data-driven." And that is so important for us, and that's what the Community Indicators is all about, is that we are data-driven. We know our facts, we know what is going on, and then we need to act on it.
What has, I mean, you've had incredible success, but what has been the hardest needle to move in 12 years?
I think education is very hard. You know, because you can sit there and say, "Oh, we're up to 23 percent," but is that because we have more people in our community going out and getting their degree, or is that in migration? So we have to look at some of those things, and I think that's going to, that probably is the hardest one to crack and the one that we cannot let go of and that we must keep pushing hard on.
Others? Well, thank you for the update.
No, thank you.
Please, please keep us informed.
I appreciate the opportunity to come tell you.
Appreciate all that y'all are doing over there, and...
Greer's important to us.
Well, good. We appreciate it.
Not only to the Community Indicators, but certainly the Mary Black Foundation.
Good. Thank you much. We appreciate it. Well, speaking of folks that are important to us, our next presentation is from Greer Relief. It's Greer Relief's annual report, and Carolyn Robertson is bringing that to us this evening. Carolyn is the director of Greer Relief, and they have done incredible things in the community. And actually, their presence in our community goes back a little further than 12 years, so they have some incredible history as well, too, in terms of providing for those in our community that find themselves in need of assistance or who don't find themselves in need of assistance but like to volunteer and help others. So, Carolyn, the floor is yours.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, and members of council, for allowing me the time here today to present the 2015 Greer Relief Community Impact Annual Report. And also, thank you to the city of Greer for your part in strengthening the service of our community and neighbors by supporting the mission of Greer and services of Greer Relief. As Mayor alluded to, Greer Relief's been around a little while. We were founded in 1936 by neighbors who saw neighbors freezing and starving. FDR called them "the uplifters." They cared enough to make a difference 80 years ago, and today, we continue their mission with our promise that every neighbor matters. The mission of Greer Relief is to prevent hunger and homelessness in the Greater Greer area, and already in 2016, Greer Relief has assisted 1,590 people in 708 households. Far too many people struggle to meet their basic needs. The process of getting medical assistance, buying food, making ends meet, and even knowing where to go for help can be confusing, intimidating, time-consuming, and embarrassing. One-stop access to agencies at the J. Brown Smith Center helps us remove these obstacles, bringing people closer to stability and closer to self-sufficiency. In 2015, 88, sorry, eight organizations provided services to the community to answer the struggle by providing medical assistance, food, financial assistance, nutrition, education, job counseling, relationship intervention, and referrals for more. In many ways, America is the land of plenty, but according to the Feeding America, one in seven Americans' hunger is a reality. Right now, 20.5 million Americans live in extreme poverty. This means a family of four's cash income is about $11,000 a year. In the last 10 years, Greer Relief has prevented homelessness by providing direct financial assistance of rent, mortgage, and utilities to 6,768 households for a total of over $1 million. Did you know if utility services are disconnected from a renter, it is grounds for eviction? Adding resources is not just about money. Definitely helps, but it's bigger than that. For example, this year's Leadership Greer Class of '26 is breaking records by raising almost $20,000 to fund three projects for three organizations. Greer Relief will receive an eight-by-eight walk-in refrigerator, giving us the capacity to keep fresh food on-site for hunger assistance. And the project has been expanded by Eagle Scout Nelson-Sinn to include an eight-foot gate and fence to keep the cooler secure and the current dumpster out of sight. Shameless plug if you're still looking for some ones. Right now, as I speak to you, Greer Relief is providing free income tax assistance preparation for households making over $54,000, or, sorry, under $54,000. So far this year, 226 households have been assisted bringing to this community over $257,000 for free. We're not just about helping provide safety net services, but offering stabilizing services to change their path and expand our impact by offering two new programs. Greer Relief co-founded a new concept program with Loaves and Fishes and Greer Community Ministries, the Greer Food Co-op. The Greer Food Co-op has been designed to serve anyone in need and to do so in a way that promotes community, individual dignity, participation, and ownership of the co-op by the members, not the agencies helping. Individuals are eligible for membership if they are a current neighbor in need from Greer Relief or Greer Community Ministries, and if they have difficulty obtaining enough food for their household, plain and simple. Between the two of us, we have plenty of households to go around. 2015 was a big year for Greer Relief. We also started Renew, an enrichment program reaching every neighbor every way. Renew teaches job, personal finance, life, and soft skills to anyone, yes, anyone. Anyone in this room can attend Renew. Anyone who wants to participate. Renew is taking neighbors in need to neighbors who thrive. The impact of Greer Relief is clear. We assisted 3,927 people in 1,564 households with one-stop safety net and stabilizing services. We have shifted with the community to continue the impact. We self-assess. We seek input and assessment from outside partners. We keep our ear to the ground for coming changes. For example, the new SNAP benefit changes and what that means for our community. All of these efforts go to make the programs we offer better. Looking past why they needed help, you can see who needed help. In 2016, we expect the number of neighbors who receive SNAP to drop due to the able-bodied adults without dependents. Federal regulations requiring the state to limit the number of months that AB, AWDs receive SNAP benefits during the 36-month period. This rule has been suspended for the last 20 years, but it expired in April, April 1st, actually. To keep SNAP benefits, they must work or participate in a work program or volunteer at least 80 hours per month. It's no surprise, unfortunately, that residents of 29651, straddling the line between Greenville and Spartanburg Counties, were the ones that needed our help the most. Greer Relief had a good year for service, which helped make up for a few of the preceding years of financial challenges. The audit in 2019 will be ready within the next 30 days and will be available online to any who would like to know our current financial situation, position. We've dropped our management fundraising percentage from 9.6 in 2014 to 5.2 in 2015, largely due to the support provided by the city of Greer in in-kind services. We're funded by United Way of Greenville County, United Way of the Piedmont, Emergency Food and Shelter Grant Program, Greer Commission of Public Works, Duke Energy, and of course, the Greater Greer Community. Greer Relief program support includes five employees, each providing some sort of element of direct assistance. Also part of our program support are two full-time AmeriCorps volunteers lending aid to direct services as well as capacity-building efforts. We're always looking for neighbors who want to make a difference. We partner with other nonprofits in the community to band together, share resources, and enhance the impact. We have opportunities for volunteers, donors, and sponsors to get involved. But I leave you today with a challenge. A challenge to pay attention. There's poverty all around us. I'm not talking about the guy standing on the corner with a sign telling you he's poor. Talking about your neighbor who sits next to you in church who received food from Greer Relief on Friday. Ask questions. What can I do? How can I help? Plug into our community of organizations for ways and places to help. Organize a food drive, collect coats and shoes, join a gleaning to pick produce for our neighbors in need. Lead a job search for a Renew session. Find something to be passionate about. Think outside the box. And lastly, which is not hard for you, is to be a caring citizen. Be compassionate, be sensitive. It's hard to live in poverty with the stigma of being the poor family, the one with the old clothes, the one always asking for help. It's awkward. Again, be caring, be compassionate, be sensitive. When we help each other, when we, yeah, when we help each other, we help ourselves. Thank you very much for having me again here today. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Any questions? Before she runs off.
Good job. Hey, if I'm not nervous enough by doing this. Yeah, any questions, seriously. Great job. Oh, thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. We really do appreciate what your organization is doing and what it means to our city. Thank you for giving us an update in that regard. Speaking of updates, we'll have the administrators report. Mr. Driggers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of council. Couple items just to report on. One, I'll just mention briefly and allow the mayor possibly to add a little more information concerning that event. But this past Saturday was a very busy day for our Recreation Department as we had the opportunity to once again celebrate opening day for our baseball program. We had approximately 1,500 to 2,000 community members, participants, families.
Thank you very much for having me again here today. That concludes my presentation. Steve, great.
Any questions?
Before she runs off.
Good job. Hey, if I'm not nervous enough by doing this. Yeah, any questions, seriously. Great job. Oh, thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. We really do appreciate what your organization is doing and what it means to our city. Thank you for giving us an update in that regard. Speaking of updates, we'll have the administrators report. Mr. Driggers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Couple items just to report on. One, I'll just mention briefly and allow the mayor possibly to add a little more information concerning that event. But this past Saturday was a very busy day for our recreation department, as we had the opportunity to once again celebrate opening day for our baseball program. We had approximately 1,500 to 2,000 community members, participants, family members that joined us there for opening day. It was a fabulous event. It is, it's phenomenal how that, that event has sustained itself over the years and has become such a tradition here in our community. But as if we weren't going to be busy enough on Saturday planning and participating with opening day, as many of you are aware, we also had the opportunity to host the International Festival. We're estimating that our attendance for the festival that day was at right between 3,500 and 4,000 folks here on the property. And with that, I will pause and allow Mayor Danner to possibly add some additional comments, because I certainly know that this is an event that is near and dear to him.
Indeed, it is, and I think this year was, was a great example of why we do this. Every year, it has continued to grow larger, not only in attendance, but in diversity as well, too. And I think we have really begun to give people a sense of who this community is and what this community is about. I think it was particularly important this year when, you know, we hear a lot of politicians and other folks talking about exclusion more than inclusion. And it wouldn't have taken you long to walk through the international market or among the other tents that were set up to realize the incredible amount of opportunity there is here, particularly related to our, to our international community. And it also was a good example for us to, to see interaction among all these different groups and nationalities and folks, and I can't begin to tell you how many people came up to me during the course of the day to, to thank the city for hosting an event like this. It truly, truly is a hallmark of the quality of life in our community, that, that we can host, host an event that caters not only to our community, but showcases our, our international community as well, too. We understand it's a valuable part of, of our industrial side for those communities that are here, those folks and companies that are here due to BMW and Michelin and Mitsubishi and some of the other international employers that are, that are here, but also those folks that have simply chosen to make Greer their home because they see us as a community that, that cares for all of their individuals. You know, as Carolyn said tonight, it might be the person sitting next to you, to the president of one of these companies from, from another country. And I do think, not only our recreation department, I think every department in the city probably had some piece or part of this, and I did ask Ed to convey to all our city employees my sincere appreciation for their double duty that day and for all of the effort that has gone into the International Festival. I think we have a real opportunity to, to grow that well beyond where we are now, and I think that's an outstanding opportunity for us and makes a real statement in the upstate. So, thank you to our staff.
Very good. It is a growing event, and we look forward to continuing that program. If, if baseball wasn't your thing, or coming to learn a little more about other cultures, then certainly children and their families enjoyed the Touch a Truck event last week. It was a phenomenal turnout. Again, for that, there's, there's something about police cars, fire trucks, and heavy equipment that, that, that children, young and old, seem to come and enjoy that. That has become a very well-attended, very worthwhile event for us to participate in, in Greer Station, and we look forward to continuing that partnership with Greer Station through the summer as they continue their Tuesday programming. As we're aware, the summer will fill our park again with our Thursday movie series. We're beginning to get all things lined up and planned for that event as well. As we are approaching here toward the end of April, one of the events that has now been renamed, you will remember that event, is called Amnesty Day, but it is our community-wide spring cleaning day. Amnesty Day was a little, we struggled a bit with that over the years, wanting to make sure that folks know that it wasn't the day to come in and have your arrest records expunged. Amnesty was truly for that opportunity to get rid of those things that you may have had in the garage, or under the house, or in a storage building through the year that we may would not have typically picked up curbside. We will again be doing that program. We'll be promoting it heavily here over the remaining weeks. But April 30th is the date for that event. It will be from 8:00 AM until 1:00 PM at our, at our recycling center. Looking forward to involving the community in that event again this year as well. Couple other calendar items for you as a community-wide event. Family Fest will be taking place on May 6th and 7th. Look forward to that community event on that Friday and Saturday. And then for Team Greer, we will be participating with all of our employees and their families with our employee picnic here on the park grounds here on June the 11th. Just a couple successes and some items, programming items that we've had, wanted to share with you. And one of those has been our CPR Saturdays that are being hosted at the fire department. We are now six months booked out on accepting reservations for folks to participate in that group. We have found that that is a tremendous need within our community, so we are offering that and continuing to offer that. So CPR Saturdays, if folks are inquiring of you of what that is or how they can participate, we encourage you to have them contact our fire department. Our staff there are providing the CPR training, but it is a valuable asset to our community. And again, we will, we will look at ways that we can expand that so that we are continuing to provide that service to the community as well. Just as a side note as well, part of what the fire department's involved in, in public education also involves our smoke detector program. We have already distributed all of our smoke detectors for this year. Because we feel so strongly in that program, we are reordering those. Our, our belief is that anyone that approaches us with a need for a smoke detector in their home, we want to make sure that that detector is placed there and is operating properly. So we will do inspection, installation, and education as part of that. Fire prevention is one of the, the biggest callings of that department, and we're very, very glad that they're being able to continue to, to be involved in that program. This evening in executive session, I would ask council's consideration of one item. It is a contractual matter. It actually shows on your agenda under new business, so I have, I've discussed with the mayor and would be asking of you to consider holding that over until after executive session. I would anticipate that we would take action on that item, but there are some, there's some information that I need to share with you relative to that contract in executive session prior to that vote being taken. That would conclude my report. Any questions that I can answer, I certainly will attempt to do that this evening, or we will make sure we get information to you as follow-up.
Great, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Couple, in items of old business this evening, the second and final reading of ordinance number 6-2016. This is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of a portion of property owned by Mark III Properties Incorporated located on Alexandra Road by 100% petition and to establish a zoning classification of R12 for said property. Steve joins us this evening, I guess in, in Mr. Pace's absence, and so, thank you, sir, for being with us this evening.
Yes, sir. Evening, Mayor and Council. The planning commission held a public hearing on this on March 21st, 2016. No one spoke in favor or opposition to the request, and the planning commission recommended approval. I would like to note that since first reading, this parcel's been subdivided, so we request an amendment to remove references to a portion of, and an amendment for a new parcel number
Okay, Mr. Grant, you may have to help us through that motion then. We're gonna, we're gonna provide, we're gonna, we're going to eliminate a portion of...
Yes, sir.
And for the purpose of the ordinance, then, that's all we need to do. Is that correct?
And add a new parcel number of 203, the last three digits are 203.
On the tax map number, correct, Mr. Grant?
Yes, sir.
Yes. So amending tax map number TO35001012002203.
The last three numbers would be 203.
That is the amendment.
It's a new parcel or just an addition to this parcel?
It was subdivided.
It's subdivided up.
Right.
And so one will be the 200, and the other will be the 200.
And 203 will be new.
Gotcha. Okay. All right, council, we all clear on that? Comes to us a second reading. I'll entertain a motion to receive with the amendments.
Second.
Motion and a second. Ms. Duncan, do you have the amendment number there? Do we, the, the ordinance as amended will read an ordinance to provide for the annexation of property owned by Mark III Properties located, et cetera, et cetera, as indicated with the new tax map number. Okay. Council clear? I'll entertain a motion to receive.
They move.
I have a second.
Have a motion and a second in that regard. Do I hear any other comments or questions? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Council, another item of old business is the second and final reading of ordinance number 8-2016. This is an ordinance authorizing the donation of certain personal property of the city of Greer. I believe we are familiar with what's taking place in, in that regard, but do you want any update or new information that...
Only additional information, Mr. Mayor, is that the Woodruff City Council has adopted a similar ordinance conveying their vehicle to the Harley-Bonds Center, so they will take receipt of our vehicle, and then their, their vehicle will be donated to Harley-Bonds, as was earlier indicated. But they have now taken action on that as well.
Thank you, sir. In that regard, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
No motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Council, in items of new business, we have the first reading of ordinance number 9-2016. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of properties owned by Greer Professional Park, General, PA, located on Chandler Road and Memorial Drive Extension from OD to RM2. Mr. Grant?
Good evening again. The planning commission held a public hearing again on March 21st, 2016. No one spoke in favor or opposition to the request, and planning commission did recommend approval. I would have, do have a note that we request an amendment to correct the existing zoning from OD to C3.
It's, it's currently zoned C3?
Yes, sir.
Okay, make, council, we need to make note of that change then as well, too.
So, I'm sorry, we're not gonna zone it multifamily, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
They want to change from C3 to RM2?
In the title, you'll notice it says from OD. That is an error. It is from C3 to multifamily.
Okay, okay. Gotcha.
It's still gonna remain the RM2 residential.
Yes.
Okay.
By show of hand, is the owner of the property or a representative of the owner of the property with us this evening? The record indicated, nobody indicated, so. Entertain a motion to receive.
They move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments?
Mr. Grant, this piece has been vacant for a long time. I know there's gonna be some topographical challenges with it. I know it's got a pretty substantial slope. And is, does Froholt Creek somehow sneak into there, or is there a dry creek at the base of this property, or is there anything like that on site that you're aware of?
Not that I'm aware of. I filled in for Glenn, so I haven't actually been out to see the property, so I'd have to get back to you on that. All right.
I think that's just a gully.
Just a gully.
Put the creeks further on down. Yeah, I think it's just a gully.
You know what the plans, when it says multifamily, is that gonna be apartment complex, or do you know?
No, ma'am, do not know, but I can find out.
When they clear a site like this, I know, I think that place has had kudzu on it for a long time. Where do they, how do they dispose of that, of kudzu, so it doesn't continue to spread?
That's an excellent question.
Complex on top of it and paved all around.
Where do they, where do they dump all of the, who would take that?
Probably burn it.
They're gonna have to just, they're gonna have to do a substantial amount of grading on that piece of property.
No doubt.
That's gonna require a large amount of fill to do anything with that piece of property. Others?
I will find out. Thank you.
Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Council, we have the first reading of ordinance number 10-2016. This is an ordinance authorizing the conveyance of certain real property into the city of Greer. Mr. Driggers?
Yes, sir. Mayor and Council, you, you may recall, because it's been some time at this point, more than a year ago, we entered into, we entertained for consideration and offer by Distinguished Design LLC, home builders here in our local community. They had an interest in doing some development at a subdivision that we actually acquired back through, the, the property was bankrupt. And, and through the bankruptcy, the property had a mortgage to us and was conveyed back to the city. The property has been vacant for a number of years now. The infrastructure is in place, roads are in place, utility infrastructure is in place. We've had no success in, in really negotiating for private development until we were approached by Distinguished Design. They are in a position that they would, they would like to market the property. They are willing to, they, they will buy down one lot at a time at a price of $12,000 per lot. Once the 12 houses are built, they will have respons, I mean, the five houses are built, they will have responsibility for paving all of the final top coat within the subdivision. At that time, we would reimburse them up to $35,000 of the total cost of that resurfacing project, and at that time, we would convey the remaining lots to them in the subdivision. In our original discussions with Distinguished Design, we believe that this is an opportunity for a, a local, recognized builder that is willing to take on some risk in developing in an area that we've not had success in getting developed, and in turn, getting income-producing, taxable properties, but most importantly, developing neighborhood in that area that to this point has, has had no activity. So this is, this is the culmination of the original discussions that we had with them a little over a year ago. We have been able to enter into that agreement with them, and so, that agreement has been executed, but at this point, this would allow us by ordinance to convey public property to them.
Council, for the purposes of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
They move. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Floor is open for discussion. By show of hand, is anybody related to this project with us this evening?
We own it, us.
Maybe from the builder.
I've done, I've done some work with Distinguished Design. I think they always do, stand-up guys, and always do a real good job, so I know they'll, I know they'll take care of us in this process.
Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Council, the third item is the first reading of ordinance number 13-2016. This is an ordinance authorizing the conveyance of any and all interest in certain real property in the city of Greer. Mr. Driggers?
Mayor and Council, you'll, you'll see by the, the body of the ordinance, this is in reference to the property adjacent to Greer High School. The, the property that we have previously annexed needs to construct a detention pond in that area. We have some property there that belongs to the city that's adjacent to the Country Club Park, Country, Country Club Road Park that's in that area. It is not part of our master-planned design or use for recreational facilities in the area. It was just part of the property that we acquired... It was just part of the property that we acquired when we originally purchased that property for the construction of that park. This would allow the park, the residential development to, to develop at full capacity there. It's excess property for us. We've negotiated for the sale of that property to the developer. We've had discussions on that relative to a property transfer contractual matter in executive session, and this is the ordinance that would allow us to transfer that property.
Council, entertain a motion for the purposes of discussion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second in that regard. Any further questions or comments in regards to the transfer of the piece of property we've discussed?
Where is it on this map, on this plat?
Included in your, it is, get my bearings. The drive that goes right beside Greer High School, I'm best to show you this way.
This is the property that would go along the high school, the high school being here. What they are acquiring is in this, this corner here for the detention.
Oh, okay, I got you.
Others? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Council, as the administrator made reference to a minute ago, we do need to take action in regards to the intergovernmental agreement for recreational funding. There are some issues related to the contract that I think certainly would qualify for executive session. I would ask that we defer taking any action on item D until following the executive session. At that point in time, we will come out and, and have appropriate discussion and action on item D. In that regard, I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn into executive session for the purpose of a contractual matter.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Council, in executive session, we have considered one contractual matter, taken no action in that regard. Do I hear a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Council, we deferred action on item D of our agenda. Having come out of executive session, I'd like to revisit item D, which is an intergovernmental agreement for recreational funding. Requires action by the council. Do I hear a motion in regards to the intergovernmental agreement?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we authorize the city administrator to sign on behalf of the city to enter into an intergovernmental agreement for recreational funding per the request from the county of Greenville.
For the purpose of discussion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Floor is open for discussion or comment in regards to the intergovernmental agreement for recreational funding as proposed by the county of Greenville?
I thought the only thing I can say is I know that as a council, when it was brought up a couple of years back, time has gone by so fast, it really doesn't seem that long ago, but it was brought up by the state, and so that was the ones that brought us into this. So even though we were very much against it, and I feel like we pretty much are still against it, but I think it's something that the Greenville County has taken control of, and it will just be what it is.
Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
No.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Council? Stand adjourned.